All right, good evening, everyone. We will call to order the regular Heath City Council meeting, October 28, 2025, at 6:30 PM. If you'd all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
Our dearest Father in heaven, we are so grateful for this beautiful day and the opportunity we have to live in this beautiful city, in this beautiful state, in this blessed nation. We're so grateful, Father, that we are all Thy children, living here and being blessed by Thy mercy and care, and we're grateful for the men and women who keep us safe. We are grateful for the service individuals that sacrifice their time and their talents to make all of our lives pleasing and good in this great city and state and nation. Father, please continue to bless them and keep them safe, watch over them and guide them and uplift their families. And, Father, we do say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
God bless Texas. There we go. Outstanding. Thank you. All right, moving into agenda item number two. This is our public comments section. Mr. Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no one signed up for public comments.
No public comments at this time. We'll move into agenda item number three. This is our city manager comments and council comments. Mr. Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I just have one comment to make this evening. I'm proud to announce that Chelsea Gordon, our new assistant city manager, is present tonight. She started yesterday, and she came back for a second day, so we must be doing something right. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, very well. Counsel, at this time, the floor is open. If you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I got one comment.
Mr. Myers?
I want to give a big thank and kudos to our city manager, Steve Alexander, Brian Creed, and their staff. I got a lady approached me about the approach that we have down here on Hubbard Drive. The old transition into the new is getting very rough with some potholes. I sent Steve an email on Monday. I got notification that it was prepared on Monday afternoon.
Great stuff.
Well, that is great to hear, and thank you.
It's great. Great accolades. Thank you to staff. We do appreciate that. Counsel, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Brian Creed and the Public Works team for all of the terrific repairs on the roads in Buffalo Creek thus far. You guys did an awesome job with the cutouts and the replacement and everything. The neighbors are really grateful for that, and it was just really first rate. I just wanted to say thank you to you and your whole team for making that happen.
Very good. Yes, we are very appreciative of road repair, very excited about numerous other projects and a recap of others, not just that road. So, very appreciative. Any other comments, counsel? All right, very well. I'd also like to say a big thank you to Suzanne. Thank you for all the hard work that you've done for working on the marketing materials in general, our EDC remarketing that you've been working with that board on. And then also, last year, we worked really hard to get out to Aragata and really do a pretty grand job on building some collateral for Rush Creek Yacht Club. And this year, we were able to garner some interest from some individuals that have some beautiful yacht boats, and they came out, and so we were able to finally get that done.
That's about eight months of planning, so we're very appreciative of that work. So, thank you, Suzanne, for your hard work. And so as we go, we'll move on into agenda item number four. This is our consent agenda, 4.A action regarding the minutes of the October 14, 2025, regular meeting. I believe everyone's had time to review the materials, so at this time, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 14, 2025, regular meeting.
Very well. Motion made by Councilman Dodson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Myers. All right, the motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Moving into agenda item number five. These are items for individual consideration. 5.A discussion and action regarding case number FP202503 for the approval of a final plat, creating Lot 1, Block A, Strong Haven addition by combining two tracts of land, Track 57 and Track 58. This is totaling 19.297 acres, situated in the J.O. Heath survey, abstract number 115, and generally situated at the southeast quadrant of Crisp Road and Myers Road. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, counsel. And thank you, Danny, for the clicker. So, the property that we have here, as you may see, this is off of Crisp Road, and it is two tracts that are almost 10 acres apiece, and so they're combining these in order to build their single-family home on this property. And this is a layout of where the proposed structure will be. It's going to sit back probably about 280 feet off the front property line. The overall structure is a little over 11,000 square feet, and so it's going to be a beautiful home on this property. And with that, the plat does meet all of the technical requirements of the subdivision ordinance. It is a ministerial function. And with that, the Planning Zoning Commission did forward a recommendation of approval, as well as staff. We do recommend approval of the plat. With that, available for any questions that you may have.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. At this time, counsel, the floor is open. If you have any questions for staff? Councilman Dodson?
Just concerning that this is one home on 19.2 acres?
Yes, that is correct.
Wow, okay.
Yes.
And I also see noted that they're looking to preserve all the trees on the site as well?
Yes, sir. They are.
Fantastic. Thanks for the confirmation.
Yes, sir.
Very well. Counsel, any other questions for staff? Very well.
All right. Thank you.
All right. At this time, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve case number FP202503. Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Okay, we have a second. By Councilwoman Thurgood. Thank you. The motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel.
All right, moving into agenda item 5.B, discussion and action on authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates for the professional services agreement for the design of well 2 through 4. Mr. Creed?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. As you stated, this is a request to allow the city manager to enter an agreement with Kimley Horn for designs of wells 2 through 4 in support of our water bridge program. And I have Kenny Frye and Anthony Samiripas here for any questions from Kimley Horn concerning this well project. This consists of eight tasks: project startup, topographical survey, field survey, subsurface utility or sew work, geotechnical preliminary design, water line design and permitting, preliminary design, and then there's the 60% where we give the comments back, and then just final design for bidding services, as well as constructional contract administration. Total is not to exceed $796,500. There is a schedule attached. The overall design will be complete by June of 2026, with a notice to proceed expected in September of 2026. It notes well number 2 completion is expected in May of '28, well 3 in August of '28, and well 4 expected in November of '28. And if there are any technical questions, I would ask that the engineers come up here and fill those.
Very well.
Kenny, Anthony.
All right. Counsel, at this time, do you have any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from any discussion and action regarding this item due to a potential conflict of interest under the Texas government code.
Very well. Your excuse. Thank you. All right. Are there any others? Are there any other questions that you may have for staff? Counsel?
I got a question.
Councilman Myers?
Which well would be number 2? Is that the Fulton Academy?
Correct. That is typically what we've designated. Is number 2 is at the North Tower.
All right. Now, wells 3, 4, and 5?
So, 5 and 6 are not in this scope, but 3 and 4 are. 3 is designated at the new Governor's Tower location, or South Tower. I don't, I guess we'll probably call it Governor's Tower. We haven't designated it yet, but it's on Governor's, the new expected tower down there. And then the additional fourth well would be at the Rockwall Pump Station.
Okay. Well, my question is this: we're looking at 300 days to engineer and 200 days engineer this above-ground water storage. Are we going to pay all of this money upfront? Because we're looking at a year or so before some of this can be done. Because the water tire has to go in, my perspective is on it, is the water tire has to go in first, then come back to see where you'd be locating some of this stuff?
So, there is some details to work out between the both project teams. You're correct.
But my question is, is we're going to pay them upfront?
No.
For a year, or is this going to be a graduated payout as needed?
Yeah, we receive payouts as they use the hours and then not to exceed. We don't pay the entire amount of these contracts upfront.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions, counsel, for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Dodson?
I see that there's a line item for contract administration. That was really important for us on some of the well storage. Does this cover all three wells on the contract admin side?
It does. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Great question. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Very well. Counsel, do you have any questions for the engineers?
Yeah, I'm not, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this is a question for staff or a question for engineers, but I'm curious at, you know, what percentage of the total cost is this? Do we have that number?
The total expected construction cost?
Yeah.
I believe it's around 4.5%.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, of course, at this point, we're basing our anticipated construction cost kind of on what the last well was bid for, right? So, 5.5 million, and considering this is a year later, so if we have $6 million a well, and three wells, it's $18 million. So, you're looking at about 4.5% or so of construction cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Alexander, could you speak to, or Mr. Creed, speak to the general practice of municipal government for engineering standard cost?
As far as the process to secure?
The percentage of what typical percentages are for engineering?
Well, so throughout my career, generally, it has been around 9% or 10% of the expected construction cost. I have seen larger projects where the numbers, it can be 6 or 7. 4.5 does seem lower than I've typically seen.
Okay. Very well.
We appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, in my research, I found that it's 8 to 15%. So, 4% is significantly less, and so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. Thank you, Mr. Creed. Are there any other questions for engineering or for staff on this line item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank Kimley Horn for working with city staff on this item, as it's a real critical part of the future of our water program, given the fact that these wells are integral to our future. And I'd just like to thank them all very much for their hard work in being able to drive on this number and get us to a point where it's something that we can support, or at least we can support from my own perspective. I can't speak for counsel. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Councilman Dodson, I would concur. Thank you to Kimley Horn for your hard work. I know it's hard to sharpen the pencil, but we're appreciative that you did. And Councilman Dodson, I believe that your comments in previous meetings about economy of scale was heard loud and clear on the record. Thank you, sir. If there are no further questions for staff, thank you, Mr. Creed.
Sir.
Okay. All right. At this time, the floor is open for discussion, or the floor is also open to entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates for a PSA for the design of wells 2 through 4 in the amount not to exceed $796,500.
Very well. We have a motion on the floor, as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilwoman Horn. Thank you. If there are no further discussion, the motion moves. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Very well. Councilman Mormon, but it does pass. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving into agenda item 5.C, discussion and action regarding Hillen Wilkinson change orders to support the Town Center Park project. Mr. Creed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a change order for the Hillen Wilkinson contract in support of the park. And as you may know, and there's my little slide there. Let me see if we can't get past it. The first part of the change order is for the 12-inch waterline relocation we had had out here in the park area. I don't know if you remember this, back in May, when we got ready to dig our entrance pond, we located a 12-inch waterline that had been relocated right in conflict with our wall for our entrance pond over there, and it had to be moved so we could set the footers for that. So, and during that same interaction, we struck a old 3-inch line that was an old Forty Lake line that runs somewhere out towards 740. We traced out and had to repair it. It did set us back, and it did require us to have to reroute the 12-inch line beyond the pond footer and get it completely out of the structure. You can see the entrance pond here on the left in its conceptual design, and you can see in the drawing on the right how the line went. I don't know if my pointer's working. Oh, right here. The line came over like this and down through the pond, and you see this line here where we diverted it across right here. And that is the first change order for that one is $48,000. The second change order is for the electrical primary support of well number 1. As y'all might recall, we have to bring in primary power for that. It's much larger, medium voltage, but much larger voltage than currently supports the park. We had to put new conduits in. There was a relocation, bringing it closer to the area of the well, and we're still in the middle of getting that done. The main park power is being moved to this trench as well, just because it makes sense to have all the electrics in one space for the aesthetics of the park. And so, we've got the conduit laid now. I don't know if you've driven by recently, but you'll see a huge trench right at the entrance where there's four big conduits laying in it. That's exactly what this is, is for that power in support of well number 1. And I don't know if you can tell from this drawing, but if you look here on Field C at the top, I can't never find my thing. So, the well would be located right up here in this little box, and so we're running the primary power, be right along this edge here of this dry pond, and it comes up and it angles over and then supports the transformers that operate our well. And you can actually see that in the drawing on the left, where it's coming up and then arcs over towards the well pad area. This is your splash pad, and this is Festival Street, which is this area right here as it comes down like this. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about this.
Very good. Counsel, at this time, do you have any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Dodson?
Brian, on this second amount of 52, 550, 58?
Yes, sir.
Should that be with Hillen Wilkinson or the well contractor? Or is it with Hillen Wilkinson? Because, as you stated, it's primary power related.
It's just bringing the primary power conduit to the well site.
Right.
It is not purchasing the transformers. It's not purchasing any electrical switchgear or anything like that in support of the well. That is not something that was bid out in the well project. So, it's up to us to get the primary power to the, you know, the encore power, to up to where they all actually meter it and have a transformer ready to go to feed what we need to feed.
Gotcha. So, the GC provides that to the site, and that's then taken over by the well contractor?
Correct. Correct. The owner, us, was on the hook to get this done.
Right. Thanks, Brian. Second question on that, for this total amount for the proposed change orders of 101, 438, 48, is there a not to exceed element in, or provision in this contract?
So, that would change the contract amount from, we've already amended the contract a couple of times, so that's why the original amount here is going to be lower than what the advertised park contract was originally.
Right.
But right now, the contract is $12,788,690, 16. This will amend it back up to $12,890, I'm sorry, $12,788,690 to $12,891,28.
Right. So, let me restate that.
Okay.
For this 101, 438, 48, which is the combination of both of these charges?
Correct.
I'd like to see an NT, an element or a provision on that, because I'd like not to have to go back and pay for that same ground again, should they come back and say, whoops, it's now going to be more than what we originally told you it was going to be for the implementation of both of these line items.
These are quoted direct prices? It will be that price.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the backups in, the direct quotes were in your packet, and I have those from Trophy, who's going to?
Right. And then there was another?
McBride.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Certainly, if counsel wants to include in the motion that the amount that these change orders are for is not to exceed those amounts, that's okay, too?
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Very well. Thank you, counsel. Councilman Mormon?
Mr. Creed, can you explain the difference in the scopes of work between the Greyhawk? Hang on a second. Let me go back to McBride and Greyhawk. Are they both electricians?
No, Greyhawk is not an electrician.
Oh, okay.
Let me get on the same page. That's a second change order?
Well, I see a Greyhawk here, and it's circled in red for $99.66, $9,900, and it just says existing waterline and detention pond. Is that like a delay charge?
Yes. So, we did get a bill for Greyhawk was on site during the original water leak.
Are they an electrician?
No, that was not for electrical. That was for the water line out here. So, we're talking about a different change order. So, the change order for the waterline relocation, Greyhawk was on site out here doing excavation work for the foundation of the pond wall, that pond wall area, which is, you see this little, where is my thing? This little overlook area right here I'm pointing at with the cursor. So, there's footers that had to be poured in there for that, that wall. That wall is going to be a masonry wall. They're starting to put that on now. They were out there setting the forms and putting all that together when the line struck.
It was a full-scale muckout.
It was. And they were on site for a particular part of time, and we actually had to negotiate that down from what their original standby time was.
Okay. And then the only other question is, contractually, and the way plans are typically written is CYA, it's kind of at the risk of a subcontractor, as things may vary or not be exact. So, from a legal standpoint, in the contracts and the contract documents, is that on the burden of the city because there was a hit line, because it wasn't shown? Because I know there's CYA language in plans and stuff where, you know, I fight this all the time. So, this is something that I typically, you know, usually eat. So, I was just wondering, is there specific legal language that holds the city liable for the unknowns?
That's a great question. There's legal ramifications in there that I don't think I'm qualified to answer for a C Mar, a construction manager at risk.
It's hard for me to answer that question right now. I can look, and I can let you know afterwards, but I'd have to read the actual contract. Go back and look at that. I don't know if I did.
Okay. Thank you for that.
It's a great question, though.
Very good. Are there any other questions for staff? No more questions? All right, very well. At this time, the chair will open the floor for more discussion or to entertain a motion.
I guess I can elaborate on that. I would need to know more about the contract and how it's written, and specifically what the plans say, and I just don't have that information right now, and I wouldn't want to guess at anything, and that's just my personal opinion.
If I could clarify, the plans did not show the lines.
Right.
So, when they were digging, they thought they were clear.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Good. Any further questions?
So, Ryan, is your question that, without the language, you think it puts us at risk? Or?
I would just like to know from a legal standpoint to have further clarification on that, because I feel like it's a gray area, you know, numerous times that I've been in those situations. You know, me and my own company would have to do a thorough investigation in addition to what the plans say. But at the end of the day, a lot of times, we make an assumption, and then boom, there you go. But, you know, I always hold myself accountable to the things that may not be shown. Obviously, you can't always do that. So, I would just come down to what the legal perspective of that is. So, and I don't know that right now.
The one question I guess I have on this, just for clarification, right? So, that's okay. So, the one question that I have is, obviously, you know, these lines were not identified. Whenever they were excavating, we did hit the line. We did flood this spot, I believe, twice.
Yes, sir.
Therefore, creating circumstance to where the contractor had to remove, rebar, and form.
Yes, sir.
Then pump it all out, and then come back and reexcavate. So, my question would be is, is that, is the $9,966 in question? I believe that's the amount in question?
No, I mean, I question the whole thing at this point. If I don't have the contract in front of me and thoroughly read through the plans, I mean, obviously Creed identified that the plans did not show the line, but I was just specifically referring to responsibility when it comes to something not being shown on the line, because the plans, the engineer has verbiage in there to cover themselves in the case that something would happen. And I don't know if there's language in a C Mar that also does the same protection from the city standpoint.
Okay. So, I believe I understand your question to be, you know, why would the C Mar not be responsible for covering these costs?
You know, in the acronym of a C Mar, I think it stands for construction manager at risk.
That's correct.
Well, I would have to have further information to know what those risks are, because if this is back on the city, then there wouldn't be much of a risk.
Okay. Very good. Duly noted. I agree on one side, and I would say, you know, C Mar does have multiple other risks that they incur. Hitting a line that they did not have identified in engineer plans does create some complexities. And no matter what, you have to remediate, and then when you realize that you have to move 12-inch lines that were not part of the original scope of the overall plan, that does create a unique problem. So, I agree on one hand. On the other hand, I also understand why Hillen Wilkinson would stake claim to this in a change order. I will, I'll make a motion. Let's make a motion that we table this for our, is it November 3? When's our special session?
Norman, when are we doing the special meeting?
November 5.
November 5? All right. I will make a motion to table this item for further review, legal review, as well as staff review, to the concerns cited by Councilman Mormon, to table this to the November 5 special session meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Very well. We have a second by Councilwoman Thurgood. The motion moves. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mayor, we'll get started on that.
Thank you, Mr. Creed. All right, moving into agenda item five dot E, discussion and action to authorize city manager to execute TIPS contract awards to Boardwalk Paving and Construction LLC for the repair of Rachel Drive and King's Pass from FM five forty-nine to Waters Edge Court. Mr. Creed?
Thank you again, Mayor. So as the mayor stated, this is for street repair and, and, um, street, part of our street maintenance program. We've, we've entered into a, an agreement with, where we already have an agreement with a cooperative purchasing group called TIPS, of which one of our, one of our vendors called Boardwalk Paving, I don't know how familiar y'all goes with them, but they're all over the place. But they've done a lot for us already, as well as some other vendors, is a member of. And we have two quotes before you tonight, we would, we would like to propose. The request is for Rachel Drive and a portion of King's Pass. Both of these fall, if the portion of King's Pass and Rachel Drive as a whole, both, both fall far below what I, I believe we, we've discussed is acceptable on our pavement condition index and, and warrant repairs. Over the past few years, we have, we have spent, this is a reflection of what we spent on our, on our street repairs. The twenty twenty-three budget was six hundred and thirty thousand, they spent five hundred and twenty-six thousand. I, I don't know in particular, particulars on that one. In twenty twenty-four, we had, we had a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand and seventy-four thousand, two fifty-seven was spent on road repairs. The twenty twenty-five budget is nine hundred and twenty thousand and this upcoming budget, budget we have now, we're just in this year, is nine sixty-six. We intend on pulling this money out of the twenty twenty-five until it's gone. And then we would start pulling it out of the twenty twenty-six. The encumbered money you see there would include the, the, the two quotes we would like to have passed tonight. And that would get us at two seventy-seven with a remaining balance of six forty-two.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Creed. If you'd like to elaborate on what TIPS is, please, for the council?
Yep, so TIPS is a cooperative purchasing board where they have to put in quotes for, or unit prices for, for what they would do their work for, their service, or their good. Boardwalk is a member and so what we do is we, we put in a request through our, through our TIPS cooperative. A vendor such as Boardwalk in this case would then, would then go through TIPS and give us a quote. One thing we do do is generally, we'll, we'll pull a quote extraneously outside of it to make sure it matches up. In this instance, I believe we pulled one on the, on the King's Pass portion and we, we saw savings of about seven, seven thousand dollars based, based on comparables. We do to get a ten percent TIPS discount based on their original quotes, so when they came in at one eighty-nine for Rachel, it dropped it to one seventy-nine, six thirty-five.
Very good, thank you, sir.
At this time, Council, do you have any, any questions for staff?
No questions but a comment, thank you so much for this, this is much, much needed, very appreciative, thank you.
Very good, agreed. Got a lot of work to do. We're headed in the right direction.
These are the big quotes to Council, I want to remind you, so all the small quotes, six thousand, ten thousand, things like that, they, they, they're just happening. So we released three more today, or three more coming to Mr. Alexander today, he's not aware. But I did, I think I did have him sign a couple of, a few days ago. So those are gonna occur and I have two more very large ones I plan on bringing back to Council here in the coming weeks.
What are some of those roads?
Knoll, Knoll Crest, you got me on the spot. There's something on Moraine. Moraine Way, maybe, is that Moraine Way? Um, and there's a third one, Faith Trail. Okay. What was that?
Way to go.
Okay.
Great recall, that's amazing.
I put you on the spot, very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, if there are no further questions for staff, thank you, Mr. Creed. At this time, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Very well.
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute TIPS contract awards to Boardwalk Paving and Construction LLC for the repair of Rachel Drive and King's Pass from FM five forty-nine.
Very well, we have a motion on the floor as stated by Councilwoman Horn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Myers, I think he beat you just barely. All right. The motion moves, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously, thank you, Council.
Very good, keep up the good work.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, moving into agenda item five dot E, discussion and action on resolution number two five one zero two eight A, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures related to the City of Heath Water Works System with future bond proceeds. Mr. Ayers?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight's resolution declares the City of Heath's official intent to reimburse expenses related to the water bridge plan. The water bridge plan consists of new water wells, ground storage tank and elevator storage tank. It's previously discussed by, by Brian Creed. The main purpose of those projects is to expand capacity and reliability redundancy to meet the current and future water demands for the City of Heath. The purpose of this resolution, again, establishes the official intent to reimburse prior expenses with future bond proceeds. We're looking to issue that debt next year around February or March. We'll actually have Jim Sabonis present the plan of finance related to that issuance. This resolution is acquired under U.S. Treasury Regulations, section one dot one fifty dash two, allows the city to use current funds, which will come out of utility capital reserves, to reimburse ourselves later once the debt is issued. And this ensures compliance with federal tax regulations for taxes and financing. The financial impact associated with this resolution sets a maximum reimbursement amount of seventy million. Does not authorize issue of debt or spending related to these projects. Legal impact, the, the city preserves the right and the ability to reimburse pre-issuing capital costs. And this resolution has been reviewed by our legal bond counsel and financial advisor for state and federal bond compliance. Staff recommendations tonight is to approve resolution expressing the city's intent to reimburse expenses related to the water bridge plan with future bond proceeds. And I'm open to any questions if you have them.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Ayers. So, so just for further clarification, right? We, we've entered in, we've started using current capital to begin the engineering processes, right? So then that way we can expedite, be mindful of our timelines and the expectations by the individuals on the desk to say, hey, we want to get this done, right? We have not issued any debt on this, so we're just making sure that we're covered to do any reimbursement necessary when that time comes.
Exactly.
Very well, I just wanted to break it down in a simple way. At this time, Council, do you have any questions for staff? No questions, very well, thank you, Mr. Ayers.
All right, very well, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number two five one zero two eight A, declaring our official intent to reimburse expenditures related to the City of Heath Water Works System with future bond proceeds.
Very well, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Dodson as stated, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second by Councilwoman Thurgood. Motion moves, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously, thank you, Council, and thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Moving into agenda item five dot F, discussion and action on the results of the twenty twenty-six employee benefits request for proposals. That's our RFP process, including the RFP analysis and staff and consultant recommendations for medical and dental insurance, insurance provider selection, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This item is to discuss and take action on the results of the twenty twenty-six employee benefits request for proposal. Just a little background, United Healthcare, we had medical coverage with them for, since twenty twenty and Cigna for dental. During our mid-year review, our benefits consultant, Hub International, suggested that we, just with the current market and the increases in insurance, that we submit a RFP for medical insurance. And tonight, we have Andrew Wiger, Assistant Vice President of Hub International. He's here to present the RFP analysis, summarize the proposals received and walk through the staff and consultant recommendations associated with this presentation. And I'll turn it over to him.
Mr. Ayers, thank you, Mr. Wiger, look forward to it.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Again, my name is Andrew Wiger, I am a senior account executive, assistant vice president, a part of our public sector at Hub International. We've been the city's benefits consultant since twenty nineteen. Really appreciate the ongoing partnership that we have with you all. As, as discussed before, the city has been contracted with United Healthcare the last five years. Just to give you some historical notes about that partnership, during that period, the average premium year over year was a one percent increase. That's well below medical and pharmacy trend, which is averaging between seven to ten percent on an annual basis. So overall, it's been a really strong partnership with UHC, but due to market dynamics, what we've been seeing this year, a lot of the renewal increases that we've seen with our public, other public entities that we work with have been ranging anywhere from twenty to forty percent increase. So we were very proactive this year and made the recommendation to issue a request for a proposal for the two thousand twenty-six plan year. So looking at the overview of, of the RFP, this was issued about two months ago. We went out to bid on both medical, which is fully insured, and dental insurance, which is also fully insured. The effective date is January first, two thousand twenty-six, so we're, once we make decisions this evening, we'll be starting the open enrollment process for staff. With the RP, you can see who responded to this, this RP, this is for medical, so you have the medical carrier, who responded, who declined, and then who we named as a finalist part of this process. So you can see UHC, Cigna, they were both responded, we did name them as finalists. Texas Health, formerly TML, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Every Health also quoted, but we did not name them finalists due to uncompetitive pricing or the plan designs did not align with what's in place today with UHC. And then on the next slide, we have our dental RP vendor response list. As you can see, this list is much more, is much larger, that's because there's more dental vendors in the market today. So I understand there's a lot of moving pieces on this slide, but what we're looking at here in columns one, two, and three are the current medical benefits offered to staff. If you look at that first column in the blue, it has deductible, the out-of-pocket maximum co-insurance, kind of just working down the slide so you can see what benefits are currently offered to staff. You work your, your way across the page in columns one, that first plan is the PPO plan that's offered to employees. It's a lower deductible at two thousand dollars for individual, four thousand dollars for family. There is an out-of-pocket maximum set at thirty-five hundred dollars for individual, seven thousand dollars for family co-insurance. Then with that plan, there's also copays. So this is the richest plan out of three options that are offered today. In columns two, that is a high deductible health plan option with a health savings account. And then in columns, in column three, that is another high deductible health plan with a higher individual deductible for members. The city does provide HSA contributions to help offset that deductible liability. So in the lower plan, there's about seven hundred and fifty dollars for the year for an individual. For the, the five thousand dollar deductible plan, it's at one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars that the city's contributing into the HSA accounts. Employees can also contribute into their HSA accounts pre-tax. So that is a benefit for employees if they do enroll in that plan. Now, you'll see columns four, five, and six, that is Cigna, that's really option one versus Cigna option two, which is highlighted in columns seven, eight, and nine. The recommendation for this year is moving forward with option two in columns seven, eight, and nine. The good news is that Cigna was able to closely mirror the benefits that UHC is offering today. The main differential on this is that out-of-network benefits, so if an employee goes out of network, they will be responsible for a hundred percent of that cost. So we're trying to steer employees to go to in-network facilities. What we found under United Healthcare today is that ninety-nine percent of your employees are going to an in-network facility, only one percent going out of network. We did a disruption comparison, looking at the, the providers inside of the Cigna network versus UHC. There was a ninety-nine percent network match, so we anticipate no disruption by eliminating those out-of-network benefits. Now, if the employee does have true emergency care, has to go to the hospital for some type of emergency episode, that will be covered at the in-network level, so there is protection for ER care. So overall, good news, benefits match very closely, just those out-of-network benefits will be excluded for two thousand twenty-six. The reason that we're presenting Cigna option two to staff as our recommendation is, UHC, their original renewal came in at a thirty-two percent increase. That was what we were seeing from the market, this is what we were kind of anticipating based off of other quotes we saw with other public entities across, across the state. If you look at the top left, you'll see financials and you'll see employee only, spouse, children, and family. You work your way to the right, you can see how many employers are enrolled in each plan. So the PPO plan, seventeen employees enrolled, two employees enrolled in the high deductible health plan one, forty-five employees enrolled in the high deductible health plan two. Overall, there's sixty-four total subscribers enrolled in the health plan. So columns one, two, and three, as you work your way across, the total cost of healthcare to the city, really, city plus employer contributions is about eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars with a total premium today. If you work your way across to columns four, five, and six, that is the renewal. As I noted before, the original renewal was at a thirty-two percent increase. Through our negotiations, we were able to get that down to about an eighteen point seven percent increase with UHC if you were to renew. That was their best and final offer through this competitive process. Going all the way over to columns ten, eleven, and twelve, this is the recommended plan design option that we're, or package that we're recommending this upcoming year. The total increase for two thousand twenty-six is a two point two percent increase. So that is still well below medical trend, pharmacy trend. Again, it does require a move over to Cigna, so there may be a little bit of disruption, of course. However, this is very, very favorable compared to market norms. I would say on our public sector book of business, we work with over, you know, a hundred within the state of Texas. The average increase we saw for two thousand twenty-six was about a ten percent increase. So you're well below market from that standpoint. By, by moving to Cigna, you'll see highlighted in red, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar bundling credits. Like Home and Auto, if you bundle those lines together, they're gonna provide you deeper discounts. That's the same thing highlighted with Cigna. On top of that, they're also providing the city at one time, a two thousand five hundred dollar wellness allowance. So that, those funds can be used for wellness initiatives, activities, programs that we can promote to staff to drive healthy behavior on the health plan. So that is, that was offered part of their best and final offer. So some proposal highlights from the RFP, that twenty-five thousand dollar upfront credit due to bundling those two lines of coverage, the twenty-five hundred dollar wellness allowance. We also secure performance guarantees centered around claims readiness, call readiness, implementation, ID card maintenance. They don't meet certain criteria standards. We will challenge them on that and they would actually owe money back to the City of Heath. Good news about Cigna, I've, I've worked with them for ten-plus years, I've only seen them pay out a performance guarantee one time out of, out of, out of those ten years, so they do a fantastic job. They also provide wellness tools and resources as well as a, a three employee assistance program visits. That's more centered around mental health resources, so if an employee has issues with marital problems or depression, they can call into Cigna's EAP and they can help guide them through those challenges that they're facing. On top of that, we are showing the two thousand twenty-six dental rates, this is assuming no plan design changes. The Cigna renewal that's highlighted in the middle is coming in at a five percent increase this year. If we were not to bundle again, that twenty-five thousand dollar medical bundling credit would be removed. And also, if medical did not sell those premiums, it would go up to nine percent instead of that five percent. So we're gonna be recommending that the city renew with Cigna Dental, no plan design changes, no disruption to members for two thousand twenty-six. And then what we show here is the combined financials, so our recommendations, you show your, your current costs in medical and dental. Overall, the cost of those two programs is over nine hundred thousand dollars in spend. If you were to renew with UHC, no changes. The dental renewed, you'd be looking at a seventeen point seven percent increase, that's about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar increase or liability. Moving to Cigna, the medical, the five percent on the dental, the overall increase is sitting about two point four percent. That's about a twenty-one thousand dollar increase for two thousand twenty-six. We just put in here our recommendations, everything that we've already discussed before, making the recommendation to move to Cigna next year with, with no out-of-network benefits. We talk about the wellness allowance, the credits, the three, three EAP visits. Down below, we have the dental recommendation as well. And then just to make sure everyone understands, there's other policies that are currently offered to employees such as vision, life insurance, voluntary life insurance, disability, HSA, that's Health Savings Account Administration, COBRA Administration. All of these items are in rate guarantee periods, so we do not release those part of the RFP for this year. However, that may be something we'll evaluate, evaluate next year as some of those policies are set to renew for two thousand twenty-seven. We will be implementing some new products under AFLAC, those are supplemental, supplemental benefits such as critical illness, hospital indemnity, short-term disability. So these are new benefit offerings that will be paid by the employee, they're voluntary options for employees next year. So those are not currently in force today, those are products that we'll be offering next year. And that is all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you, sir. I will say-
I will say that when, when Mr. Alexander was talking about the, the new rates from UHC, I was very happy to see that the hub was going to be looking for a better solution.
Yes, sir.
So you guys did a, did an outstanding job. The other quick concern that I had, which you addressed, was the, the in-network and, and doing the disruption analysis. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
That's a big element of trying to ensure that your staff doesn't have major pain inside of the switch.
Yes, sir.
So very much appreciate that. At this time, the floor is open, counsel, for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Dodson.
Is that wellness allowance $2,500 per member or per insured life?
It's for the entire entity. So it's, it's just a one-time $2,500. It's not per individual.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. And you had mentioned that vision, STD, LTD are outside of the purview of this now. If they were to be bundled, would that have a net impact, positive impact?
There is a poss, yeah. So next year, once those policies are set to renew, we could look at bundling the vision program. It usually provides a little bit of a discount, very minor. It's about a quarter of a percent on the medical premiums. The life, disability, Cigna does not write those products today under there. So there would not be a bundle opportunity for that, for those lines.
So is UHC just trying to get out of this business? Because they, they are certainly pricing themselves like they are.
It's, it's been.
It's egregious.
A, a challenging year, to say the least. I think we all know what happened in the news earlier in the year. You know, they have had a lot of lawsuits as well in the Medicare market as well. So, you know, there's, there was a really good time period, five years, you know, where, where the utilization looked really strong. However, this is looking at a, kind of their block of business right now is not performing well. And so they're impacting a lot of different groups.
Gotcha. Thank you, and great job on this assessment.
Thank you.
Six-figure savings, great job. Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate the work that's been done on this. Thank you to Mr. Alexander for putting a major focus on this and seeking a lot of counsel as well as, as well as our partners. At this time, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion. As I say that, Mr. Alexander, are, is it staff's position that there's a recommendation for the adoption of this recommended 2026 employee benefits package?
Yes, sir. Staff is recommending to move to Cigna and their EPO plan.
Okay, very well. The floor is open to entertain a motion.
I'll motion that we award the 2026 medical plan to Cigna with implementation of the exclusive provider organization or EPO model, and renewing the dental plan with Cigna at a 5% increase, maintaining the bundling incentive.
Very well. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Thurgood. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Horn, thank you. The motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thanks again, counsel. Moving into agenda item 5.G, discussion and action on an ordinance updating the City of Heath Master Trail Plan. Mr. Gonzalez.
You read that caption pretty quick. Should have ran up here. All right. Thank you once again, Mayor and counsel. And this is the proposed plan that you have in your packet. And the one thing I wanted to point out, just a little history on this, is that Parks Recreation Trails Master Plan was adopted in 2018. And there were amendments to the plan in December of 2019 to the trail plan itself. That was, that's the latest update that we have to the plan. And so technically, that's considered the, the plan that we have in place now, the 2019 plan. However, when you take a look at the city's website, there's a plan out there that shows July of 2023. That however, was not brought forward to city council for adoption. So it's a 2019 plan that we currently have. So what we're doing now is, is make sure that we bring forward to you this plan for adoption. Because it's important to have a trail plan that, that we can have to support whenever a development does come in. That way, we can take a look at the city's vision for the trails and connectivity, and that we're working off an approved plan as well. So with this being said, the, the, one of the goals of the 2025 comprehensive plan is to update the trails master plan. So that's what we're doing here this evening. And a focus on that is trail connectivity and with continuous sidewalks and trails connecting to adjacent properties. So what you'll see here on this plan is, is we've done that. Take a look at the plan. You can see that there are, are connectivities, not only within neighborhoods, but also where we do have some commercial activity as well. And this plan was taken to the Parks and Rick Parks Board, rather, last week on the 20th. They did review the plan, they did review some of the amendments here. They are forwarding a recommendation of approval. What I want to do is just go through some of these, some of the amendments here. And what you're going to see is you're going to, you're going to see, some of these are going to be simple. They're going to be, it's going to be a size from five feet, maybe to 10 feet, a relocation of a trail, an added trail. But overall, what you'll see is that the proposed trail, which is in red here, there's quite a bit here. So this is an overall plan, one that we want to see that's, that's going to be complete. And it's a working plan. So if there's some changes later on in the future, we can certainly make changes to the plan. The areas that are highlighted in green or blue, however you see that, those are existing trails. And so what I want to do is just go through, I have just a few slides for the amendments that we have. Just kind of go through these and, and let you see what, what these changes are. And on this first one, this is essentially just a change from, you have a five-foot sidewalk along 740 that, that starts on Heathland Crossing, if I can get this going, from here all the way up to the city limits. And the amendment here is to make that a 10-foot trail. So that's a, that's a, that's a simple ask there. We go to the next, I don't know why that's up there like that. On the next one, what we're looking at here is from Heathland Crossing up to, on the, on the west side, Heathland Crossing, right here, up to Country Club to incorporate a 10-foot trail in here. So you'll see that, that you have two trails, one 10-foot in red, and then, of course, the existing that's here on the east side as well. On the next plan, this, this is going to be on the east side. And this will be just north of Country Club Road, which is, there is a five-foot existing here. And the change, or the amendment, would be to make this a 10-foot up this way. And the next one, this Kaiser Springs Road, as you may know, this is a private road, and it's a gravel road. This was placed on the plan to have a, a trail. This simply has just been removed. It's a private road, so there's really no need to have a trail on this system, on this property at this point. So that's one of the things that we're bringing forward to you. The, the next portion here, this, this, from 740 on up, sorry, I got the airport. 740, we showed a trail system along White Road. What staff has found out is that actually this, the White Road, all of White Road belongs to the city of Rockwall. So this area here backs up to home. So we're just removing this trail segment between 740 and White Road. So that'll be removed. On the next section, this is just correcting the map. We show that there's an existing here from Wilford, from Wilford Way to White Road along Heathland Crossing. And so all we're doing is just making that change to be a proposed 10-foot here, this section. On, on the next, now, these next two slides, what I want to do is kind of cover this in a different manner. These are, these are tunnels that are being proposed along 549 and 550. This first one shows to be along 549 and Heathland Crossing. From, from this point, we want to put this on the plan. These are really conceptual at, at this time. Until development comes in, there are pros and cons to the tunnels. However, we want to include this because there's have to be a way for folks to be able to cross 549 and 550 in order to make that safe transition over to the other side and have that trail. So, so this is, this is just providing that for you and showing a tunnel and crossing. Obviously, we'll have to get text out involved in that whenever, at the time of development, to see how this, how this would work. On the next slide, once again, this is just 550, same thing, same concept. You've got the tunnel that's crossing over from Buffalo Creek and then tying in down into the Stonely area as well. Next slide over, this is, this is adding in a, another proposed trail. You have a trail here on the outside of 550 and 549 that wraps around from Stonely up to the Heathland Crossing area and coming back around. What this segment is doing is adding in a 10-foot trail on the, on the opposite side of 550 and 549. That way, you have a trail on both sides. This is, this is a nice, interesting piece here where you can, you know, someone that's in here can just can do a continuous loop in that portion of the trail, and you have connectivity that will happen right down here as well to this existing. This is a change on the, an amendment to a current trail. This is Heath Hawk Drive. You have the high school that's located here. Currently, the trail shows to be on the north side of Heath Hawk Drive, which is the school. And the change is to bring this down onto the south side of Heath Hawk Drive. As you know, there is a development that's going on here along Heath Hawk Drive, and the applicant is going to put in a 10-foot trail along this property here. This will connect over, eventually make this connection here over to Chris Cuny. This obviously comes down, Chris Cuny to Smurl Drive. So that connection comes in as well as the addition of another connection here that will, that will attach to or stub out over here at this existing trail that's on the south side of this 11-acre property. This, this is Amy Park. This is the park project that's going on. What you have in your packet shows an amended segment that will come along here. This is technically in, so we've made that change. And to show that this is actually in, I think there's just a couple of sections here that are leave-outs for construction at this point. But technically, that, that is already in. So we've made that change to show that trail in. On, on this next one, when we go back, we talked about connectivity, and, and this is, this, this has a lot of moving parts in this. And you probably saw that already on your, on your plan. However, just want to walk you through a little bit of this and, and to see how this can make sense. There are modifications to this that will show, first of all, let me just point out, there is the Lake Ray, I'm sorry, yeah, Lake Ray Hubbard here, take line area. There is a small footbridge here that shows to be on the current plan. This is, this is going away. There's simply just a, there's a permitting process that goes through this, through the city of Dallas. And the realignment that's being proposed on here just makes more sense to do away with that, that way we can get the, get the trail in, or the trails in here. There is a long, this area here, which is, whatever, I got my clicker here. An addition will be added here along, I think this is 13 and 14, that will come in and connect to, and bring, bring it down to Phase 15 here. There's a section between here and here that is in the golf course, as well as this portion that's in the golf course. These sections will be removed, or this section will be moved over into Phase 19 and Phase 18 and connecting down here. This portion will be removed, and I'm going to show you that on the next map as I'm supposed to be talking here. So these are, these are, these are positive changes. When you take a look at the, at the layout now, this just looks a whole lot better. It works better. And so you can see where the connectivity goes into the stub outs for some of those that are on the existing. This just works a whole lot better for you. And, and with that, one other item that we have that we've included on the plan, we, we never really had a detail or a design standard for our trails. And so we want to make sure that we put in a cross-sectioned design standard. That way, we know what that trail, how it's going to be built. And, and that'll be a 10-foot trail as we, as we move forward with any new developments here. So with that, once again, Parks Board is forwarding a recommendation of approval, and staff is forwarding a recommendation of approval as well. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. First, let me say thank you. I know that this was a big thing to tackle. Just so counsel understands, a lot of what you're seeing is just a very outdated map. So we took advantage of, you know, making sure that the park board was in alignment with what actually existed. Some of these things were not really updated as time went on. And so there's the idea that there might be a trail over off this section, or, you know, Kaiser Springs is an example of, hey, that's going to be a, a trail that deadheads, and that's a private road. So a lot of it is playing cleanup. And, and one thing in this cleanup process was understanding that we have vulnerabilities. What are those vulnerabilities? It's a vulnerability of if somebody purchases a piece of property, and then they bring it to the city staff and say, hey, this, this is, this is what I'd like to develop. Well, you, you kind of preserve your trail strategy by having this documented. So as many of you saw within our comprehensive plan, it cites your trail map. So for future land use, this is very, very strategic. And as we have adopted, you know, we're a premier outdoor lifestyle community. We wanted to make sure that we're on point with this. So I'm very thankful for the work that your staff has done. Also very thankful to the park board, because this is a bit of a laborious process to go through what we have, what we don't have, what we do want to see, future state, et cetera. Heath Golf and Yacht is a prime example, a prime example of how that, that map had stayed the same way. And, and we're trying to figure out how Hubbard Drive is going to get their trail and how this is all going to interconnect. And so we identified some, some obstacles with the city of Dallas. And so this is going to create solidarity for the strategy and then allow HGYC to then work with staff as you guys work with Dallas permitting offices to try to get those necessary easements, right?
Correct.
For that Hubbard Drive. So, so there's kind of a series of events that happened to make this come to fruition and come to the park board, and a whole lot of hands and a whole lot of work was put into it. I will also tell you, a vulnerability is one that you see here, is our trail standards, right? So as you look through our ordinances and as you look through your comprehensive plan, you know, you didn't have a trail expectation. So you might be citing trails, but you're not saying what a trail is, what the size of the trail is. So again, this is a big cleaning all the voids and trying to make sure that we're giving all the proper tools to the different boards that we have that represent us as elected officials moving forward. So thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. At this time, the chair will open the floor if you have any questions for staff.
Yes, I have a question.
Councilwoman Horn?
In regards to the trail standards, is the trail that is located near Heathland Crossing, is it built to those standards? Do we know?
I don't know that at this point.
My, my understanding, I don't think Richard Dormire is here, but I thought, I remember him saying that the Heathland Crossing, that's where he got the design standard from.
Okay.
Are you, are you referring to the 10-foot trail that kind of starts further down the path, and then it cuts back through the?
Yeah, White Road. I mean, we moved to this community and chose this area because of the quality of that trail. They did a really beautiful job. And so I was just curious if all of them were going to be similar to that.
That's a, that's a very great point. And I will tell you in meetings, the term that we used was that area is, is a bit of our most mature trail system. And if we could look at a model, that was the model that was talked about.
Absolutely.
And, and, and that's why you also will see, you know, on White Road, you know, technically, you have a trail on the opposite side, but it's the most mature area that we have for trails. So why wouldn't we take advantage as we have a large-scale piece of property that currently is not developed? And then on the, and again, talking about vulnerabilities, on the, on the trail map, it actually identified, it identified Ridge Road as already having a trail. And in fact, it is not. It is a five-foot sidewalk. That's very much utilized, right? But it is, it's curbside. So we wanted to identify things like that. I think the park board really kind of wanted to make sure. I think the Park Board really kind of wanted to make sure, hey, how are we really following the standards of being a premier outdoor lifestyle community and trying to look at Heathland Crossing and those different phases, what they did? So, it's a great question. Agreed. Any other questions for staff, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dodson.
David, what's the timing to update the master plan for this, for the Park Board? Do you have a sense for that?
With that being, you talk about the Parks, Recreation and Trails Master Plan?
Yes, right.
Having had the discussion, something I could take a look at and come, and get back to you on?
Yeah, if you could. I mean, you know, if we're working off of a plan that's already six years old, I, I feel as though there needs to be an initiative behind updating that for not only where we're at, but where we're trying to get to.
Yeah.
Much like we did on the comprehensive plan over the last couple of years.
I agree. It's a great point. Very good. Any other questions, council? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And, and also too, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for all that you guys have done to, you know, play the cleanup game and working with property owners to do that. Even with the EDC, the EDC's done some amazing stuff for the first time ever. You know, they're, they're, they're mowing and having somebody come out and mow, and you have the Malouf property that's mowing, you have the Shop Group that's mowing. I mean, for the first time ever, I'm standing next to Tom Thumb going, I don't know that I've ever seen it this nice. So, thank you. I know that that's a big effort on your staff's part. And thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for, for really spearheading that, because you really have in a big way. All right. At this time, the chair will open the floor to, to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Recite the ordinance.
Okay, okay. Hang on one second. You go ahead if you want, if you have it there.
I have it. All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Number 251028B, casting the city's 50, no, I'm so sorry. That is embarrassing. I apologize.
Let me take a swing. All right, here we go. Casey's at bat, hang on.
No full motion accepted at this time. Moving down to the desk.
All right, here we go. I'm the, I'm the last one before we get to the train station. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the updates to the City of Heath master trail plan as outlined by Mr. Gonzalez.
And citing the ordinance number 251028X?
A.
Yes, that's accurate.
A, but not marked. Very well.
It's A.
All right. All right. The motion is on the floor as stated.
I'll second.
We have a second. Councilman Myers beating everybody. Here we go. Thank you, Councilman Myers. All right. The motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, council. And we do hope to continue to see dynamic upgrades to ordinances that we talked about with conference plan, and these items are so pivotal. And thank you, Mr. Dodson, for bringing up the, the master park and recreation plan, because those are the things that we need to update to include our thoroughfare plan and many others. So, all right, very exciting times. Moving into agenda item 5.h. This is discussion in action regarding the resolution voting for one or more candidates to the Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Ms. Norman?
Okay, well, Michelle already approved this one. Now, this item is for the approval of a resolution allocating the 56 votes that we have. Hold on, let me back up a little bit. On October 14th, the last council meeting, we approved a resolution nominating two candidates for the Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, and we nominated Richard Kopeck and David Billings. So, now, this, I have the ballot tonight, and I need instruction as well as to approve the resolution, giving me the number of votes that you, I mean, how you want to allocate the 56 votes. All of them to one person, or split it between David and Richard, or Anthony or Cedric?
I would assume, I would assume, council, that we will split those evenly, but you guys are welcome to open this up for discussion. At this time, the chair is opening the floor for discussion. Very well, we'll move into opening the floor for a motion.
Ah, please, let me redeem myself. All right. All right. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 251028B, casting the city's 56 votes evenly to both candidates.
Very well. We have a second?
I'll second.
I don't even know who went first.
Mr. Councilman Mormon.
Councilman Mormon, very well. We have a second on the floor. The motion moves. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, did we get the two candidates that we were casting the votes for, Norma?
Yes, they're in the document.
That would be 28 votes for David Billings and 28 votes for Richard Kopeck.
Yeah, I think there were three, weren't there three candidates?
There's four.
Four, right. Just one for clarification. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. The ISD gets all the votes anyway, so. No bitterness. All right. All right, moving into agenda item 5.i. Presentation and discussion of the August 2025 Financial and Investment Report. Mr. Ayers.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is your August FY '25 monthly financial report. This report is a overview, provides a comprehensive summary of the financial performance through August 31st, 2025. Includes general fund and utility fund analysis, fund balance and capital project summaries, the legal expense trends, quarterly investment performance, and public funds investment ad compliance. This, this report is put together to promote transparency and fiscal stewardship. This is just a look at the general fund revenues, fiscal year 20, 25 versus fiscal year 24. Property taxes is a central part of the general fund revenue. Sales tax is a second huge contributor to the general fund. And there you have the comparisons. In blue is FY '25, and in orange, orange color is FY '24. And every, all of the revenues are meet in, meet in budget currently. This is just a breakdown of the sales tax collection, of the monthly collections from, for the whole entire fiscal year. In green is, is your FY '25 actuals, and we're roughly 5%, looking at roughly 5% at this part of fiscal year above budget in sales tax revenue. This is your expenses by department, fiscal year 25 versus 24. Breakdown of the, the largest part of the, the general fund budget is your public safety. And public works is, is second. It's just broken down in, in a different facets within, within the general fund. This is a overview of the, the historical legal expense analysis that we put together. Starting with FY '25, '22, you start to see a steady increase in regards to litigation of, of your actuals in orange, increasing above the budget in blue.
If we could have a moment of silence and freeze frame. For those at home, if you can't see that, please take a screenshot.
Yeah, so, in FY, oh, I'm sorry.
Very proud of that slide.
Yeah. So, in FY '24, we reached above 1.2 million. FY '24, we're roughly 285,000. Projections are looking to be below budget for fiscal year '25, so that's good. Utility fund revenue, fiscal year '25 versus '24. So, city water charges are currently at 6.6 million, a huge part of the utility fund revenues. Again, there's a breakdown of all of your revenues within the utility fund. And this is your city wa, water charges. As you can see, just looking at the, the graph, around June, July, August, September, that's when you experience your highest uses, usage within the fiscal year. And this is a, again, an expense breakdown by department, water distribution, sewer collections, utility administration, utility billing, and non-departmental. And with this being 92% of progress and through the fiscal year, this is a breakdown of your operating funds, fund balances, the general fund sitting at 7.5 million, and your utility fund at 14.7. And the total of all of your operating funds is roughly 27.3 million in fund balance as of August 31st, 2025. Your general debt service, this is where we pay all of the, the tax-supported debt for the city, is sitting at 1.3 million. Your bond and capital projects currently sitting at, in total, at 52.8 million. A large part of that is your certificate of obligation, general bond, 2023, which covers Town Center Park, Republic Works Building, and the two public safety facilities. Here is your internal service funds, the general capital replacement fund, the, the general equipment replacement fund, and the utility equipment replacement fund. These two funds are for replacement of equipment and vehicles that reach end of life, and those two together are sitting at 1.4 million. And these are your special purpose funds, totaling 423,000, and a total of all funds at the end of August is 83.3 million roughly. Just looking at your capital project summary, these are the generous capital projects. It's, might be familiar, just presented to council in the previous meetings, is Legend Drive and Sarita Circle. The available, total available balances there versus budget is 121,000. Your water capital projects includes skater system upgrade, fire flow improvements, DOR Estates, the AMI. Implementation phase number two, which is coming to a close. Waterwell number one is a design which is complete, and the fire flow improvements at Cadillac Park, that's still in the design, still. And a part of the, the water bridge plan is your 3 million gallon ground storage tank and a 1.5 million elevated storage.
If you want a freeze frame to that as well, very proud things on that, on that list. Move on.
And your available balance there with all of those projects together, budget versus expenses is 1 million. And these are all your projects. You got to make sure there of the 2023 CO, the public works facility, originally budgeted 6.25 million, available balance there is roughly 1.4 million. We do expect some more costs associated with their projects, associated with furniture and additional items related to that project. You have the public safety facility, both of those facilities, sitting at 15 million projected. The $920 for each is for the signage outside of those two sites. Our city hall improvements, I was discussing the last meeting, for the community, community room upgrades, as well as other items associated with improvements to city hall, that's still underway. City hall beautification as well. The OpenGov project is paid for, but we're still working through that with OpenGov closing out with the utility component of that project.
Yeah, so that, that transition to OpenGov is nearly complete. So, that is huge for us from an operational standpoint, because right now, we've been living in two worlds with regards to software, enterprise software packages. And so, we'll get, we'll get back some bandwidth and capacity once that's fully done. But, but building permitting is online through OpenGov, the asset management software is online through OpenGov, the part, portion of our financial package, general ledger, procurement. Thank you. Procurement, that's been, that's transitioned over. The last piece is the transition over utility billing, which we expect to have done at the end of this month. And the transition over to the new payroll software, which ties into OpenGov, that software being UKG, should be done at the end of November as well. And so, we'll be able to pick up some efficiencies internally once they all get done. But I will say, and to the mayor's point, the last two slides speak volumes about all the great things going on in our community, with the public, public works building under, under construction, two public safety buildings about to start construction here next year, the water bridge plan being rolled out, implemented, the fire flow improvements that are being made. Hubbard Drive beginning bids back this week for council action next week. Hopefully, we get good bids on that. So, we just have a lot of success stories in, in these last two slides. I think it's important for everybody to see and understand.
Agreed. And, and I've heard that the ERP transition's been really easy. Staff hasn't had any issues?
I wish I could confirm that, Mayor. It has been a challenge, but we're getting ready to wrap it up and be done with it.
Well, let me, let me say thank you to the staff. I have been able to see at firsthand how complicated and problematic these, these types of massive software integrations are, and so, thank you to staff and all the hard work that you guys do to deal with that on a daily basis. So, very, very much appreciate your patience and the learning curve and the transition. And we've had data migration issues and, you know, having to get on, get on multiple calls to try to figure out how in the world is this data gonna transfer appropriately without shutting down, you know, entire water billing systems, right? So, I'm very proud of you guys. I know it's kind of the, you know, it's, you're just in the tranche of it, but now I believe you are coming out, and I'm excited for you. So, very good.
ERP systems are like running bamboo reeds under your fingernails and lighting them on fire.
That's right. That's right.
And that's maybe the best day.
Yeah. Very good. Very descriptive. Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. Take that to bed with you.
Mr. Ayers?
And this is just a, a quick look at the investment summary. At the end of August 31st, we had 83.8 million dollars to invest. A large portion of that is your local government investment pools, that's TechStar and Tech Pool. For this quarter, well, progressing through this quarter, it's not closed yet. We've collected 575,000 roughly in interest, and fiscal year to date, we've collected 3.15 million in interest from, from those funds. And this is just a breakdown of the, the monthly interest that we received in blue as of fiscal year 2024, '25. So, you see a slight, slight decrease in, in interest collected for FY '25. Not, not too bad. And that's the end of my presentation, and I'm open to any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. At this time, the floor is open. Council, free questions for staff?
So, what I'm seeing is that we're below budget for our projections for legal fees, and therefore, there may be more money. We could be moving to road repair funds? That's just my...
In fact, that was on a slide previous.
That was just my observation.
That's where that money came from.
Yeah.
So, congratulations, and let's keep going that way, because I would like to, yeah, see some more mons, funds allocated for road repair.
Agreed. Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Dodson?
Couple of macro observations, Jay. You know, look, our, generally speaking, our revenue's up, our expenses are down, but our mix is a little wonky, particularly on the revenue, right? Which I think is, leaves us really vulnerable, and I think that we all really have to think about this, right? We have 15% of our overall operating revenue that comes from sales tax, and 57, 58% or so that come from property taxes. And for those of you that were paying attention in the last legislative agenda, Austin is not coming after state funds, they're not coming after county funds, they're coming after local municipality funds, which happens to be the smallest bucket that they have so that they can claim and take a victory lap. So, what didn't pass through the special session will undoubtedly come about in the 90th legislative agenda, and we're sitting fairly vulnerable for if our funds are utilized or run the city, and the vast majority of our funds are derived from property taxes, and that amount takes a prorata reduction, then we have less money to operate our city because we can't offset that with a corresponding sales tax base. So, I know, Mr. Mayor, that the EDC is working really hard on that, and you're, you're really, you know, supporting that effort as well. But I just want everybody to understand kind of where the cards are being played and what that might mean for us as a growing municipality with needs on the revenue side of the, of the equation. So, we need to, you know, we need to really, I think, pay, pay attention to that. You know, when you, when you talk about sales tax variance, it's great that we're, again, 15.1% accretive to, to budget, but, you know, the overall amount isn't that material relative to, you know, the other parts of the budget that we count on from a revenue perspective. And it looks like the fine... And it looks like the fines piece, if I'm not mistaken, that, that's really more seasonal in nature. The fines, forfeitures, and, and penalties piece sort of comes off of that. And two things that jump off the page when you take a look at the general fund, from my perspective, is we're picking up fairly sizable positive variances on community development, where we have approximately three hundred thousand dollars of positive variance and in about two hundred and some odd thousand dollars on, on parks. But the question really comes to mind when I see that, that jumps off the pages, why? What did we plan to do that we didn't actually do with that funding? And where else could it be appropriated for? And, you know, is, is that just kind of a miss on our part? We sort of thought it, thought it would, you know, come in at this level, and it came in significantly lower, et cetera. So, you know, just looking at things with a financial lens, you know, really, you know, causes me to, 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 to think that, that this might be a mixed bag. While overall, the revenue piece seems positive, and the expense seem, and the expense line seems positive, the overall mix piece is what I think that we need to pay attention to. Steve being a former financial guy, and Jay, you know, with this being, you know, everything that you're involved with, you know, I'd like us to, to talk a little bit more about that as time goes on, so that we can take risk off the table as we think about planning for this, not only for executing this budget cycle, but next year's budget cycle as, as well. Just a couple of other comments.
Scott, can I, can I interrupt?
Yeah, you bet.
Really quick. Would you mind putting that slide back up? I thought that was, to your point, when I saw it in the slide that you had, it looked a lot different than seeing it in our packet. It, it had the compare, yeah, right there. And maybe I missed it in the packet. No, no, not expenditures, what, what we take in.
Revenue.
Revenue, thank you. Where, where you had it laid out, the amount that was.
Are you referencing the, the general fund?
Yes. Yes, that one. So to your point, Councilman, the, if you look at that, it is, it's stark, the difference. And I noticed it, and then I'm thinking about the money that we take in on fees. If we solve our water problem, that's another revenue source that, yeah, we'll still be fineing people for maybe not watering on the right day, but the ultimate goal is to get beyond that. So that's another revenue source that we're going to lose. So I, I totally agree. Thank you for bringing it up. You know, we need to be, and we talked about this during the election as well, we need to be really focused on how are we going to build sales tax? How are we going to build that base?
With, with businesses that fit our profile and our comprehensive plan, right? So, and, and I know that we're all violently in, in agreement on that. I'm wondering, on the revenue analysis with sales tax funds, in what month will the EDC stop contributing to parks?
For the coverage that they want to be have, yeah.
They are, they already have.
That's fiscal year, right?
Right, right.
Well, well, for, for clarity purposes, though, they are still funding, because they, they were the underwriter for the Town Center Park. So they are still funding, they're just no longer giving the, giving the sales tax share that they were giving.
Right, which was the twenty or twenty five percent on a, on a prospective basis on the amount of receivables that they have, correct?
Say that again.
So EDC was providing parks twenty five percent of their portion of sales tax revenue, and they were submitting that to parks from EDC.
Fund debt service, right.
Yes, sir.
Well, it was the fund, fund capital projects, they cut that off in FY twenty six.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. Then my last question, I guess, on our fund balance summaries that you had talked about. Again, we look incredibly healthy on our fund balance summaries. Are we appropriately funded, or are we too heavily funded on our fund balances with respect to what is best practice and what we should consider for a city of our size with the amount of active projects that we have?
That's a loaded question.
Yeah.
A good question, but.
Yeah, great, great, great question, great observation. I mean, we do have a minimum fund balance requirement, and we are in excess of that for the utility fund and the general fund.
Right.
And so what, what does that tell you? That, that tells me, we, it tells you we have some funding in the general fund that we can transfer over to some capital improvement fund, or whatever initiative we might have in front of, in front of us that council wants us to pursue.
Right.
And so, once we move that money to a capital improvement fund for capital projects and get that down to your, I think, twenty, do we do twenty five percent? I can't remember.
Yeah, twenty five percent.
Twenty five percent fund balance here, twenty five percent is appropriate, and that's best practice.
But, but, but within our, our internal practice has been thirty five percent.
Thirty five percent, exactly.
Yeah, that's right. Our policy says twenty five.
So policy's twenty five, but we're currently operating with thirty five percent.
Frankly, I think your, your twenty five percent reserve is the best practice and in, is sufficient, you know? And so you will, you'll have some money you can move over to capital improvement fund, so that will put you back kind of right the ship, if you will. And have some money set aside for road maintenance for a new, a new road project, or the case may be. And I think that's something we tackle during the next budget process to work out, to your point earlier.
Right.
And the utility fund, the fourteen million is well in excess of a twenty five percent or thirty five percent reserve. And so, again, part, part of what's driving that, and I'm going to have to have Jay correct me if I say this incorrectly, is that there are some impact fee monies within that fund balance that we've got to identify and move out, review how much of that can be applied to past projects that we've done, that were appropriately identified in the impact fee studies, and then have council authorize reimbursing utility fund for those past projects with that impact fee money.
Right.
And, and put that money back in front of us, kind of a little bit of a, we'll have to move some money around to make that happen. But ultimately, you may, because I would imagine, over the years, there have been projects that were appropriately identified in those impact fee studies that we have built, you know, that we can say, okay, this excess money in the fund balance that's associated with impact fees can appropriately be applied to those projects, and put us back into this position where we've got around fifteen million dollars sitting there. Again, then identify our thirty five or twenty five percent, whatever reserve we all agree that is the best approach for us, pull the rest out, put it in a utility capital reserve, and use that money for utility projects going forward.
But it could be episodic, right? Because right now, if you take a look at our plan, we are very capital project intensive, and rightfully so. We have been starved as a community for ongoing needs, not only on these incremental projects, but on also major capital repair projects that really probably haven't even hit our, our, our capex line.
Yeah, no, no question about it.
So, so, I, I mean, the biggest rate limiting factor, I think, we have is capacity, is staff capacity to get after the things that we have to get after, which may cause us to look, Steve, to your point, in our next budgeting cycle, on how can we creatively look at capacity with regards to getting more things done and attacking across the wider front?
I, I, I agree with everything you just said.
At the same time of being conservative with those additional resources in which you've identified, that we do have some deltas that could create some vulnerabilities, right?
Okay.
We, we will always look to be conservative with the public's dollar.
I, I, I agree with Councilman Dodson, I just want us to also be mindful of the things in which we've said, hey, we do have some vulnerabilities with resource generation, right? So, so as we do have those reserves, there is a major need for that capex, and, and we're generating things that should have been handled. There's all, obviously, too, some, some impact fee studies that need to be really ironed out in a big way here, to identify certain elements that probably needed to be tackled years ago. So I, I concur with you, I'm just saying, as we do look at that, that delta, we're, at the same time, talking out of the other side of our mouths, say, hey, we have resource concerns, too, as we move forward, right?
Yeah, resource with the biggest issue being revenue and the upside down, you know, manner in which we achieve it, primarily in, in a pejorative way based on property taxes versus sales tax revenue or anything else.
Yeah, completely agreed, right? And, and, and I will tell you, for those of you that are, that are sitting in the room for the first time, but we, we've talked about it over and over again, is that we want to be creative in revenue generation. We're, we're really asking other boards to be creative in that, in that way as well. So completely agree.
Okay. Thanks, Jay, very much, and Steve, thank you both very much.
Very good. Any other questions for staff, comments? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
And by, by the way, just real quick, Mayor, anytime there's additional information that council would like to see from a financial perspective, please let us know. If we're not getting you the information that you feel like you need to help govern the city and monitor what's going on, you know, we have a job to do to make sure you're getting that information. So feel free anytime to contact us and let us know how I'd like to see this analysis or that analysis, and we'll work to put that together.
If I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Please.
I, I can tell you that, that, that the quality of the data that Jay has brought forth has continued to be exceptional, just with regards to visibility, and us having the ability to sit back and look at it and assess based on kind of what's happening in real time. And now, more recently, over the last ninety days, when you put that with our operation plan for this next budget cycle, and also the capital plan that we have out there, put it against all the things that we're trying to do that we've all stated that the citizens have told us that they wanted, you know, it creates, you know, a chance to really do some great and exciting things here for the city of Heath, right? But, but, but every financial measurement is, is, you know, you, you have to look at it independently. And this just happens to be a mixed bag, and I think that we just have to pay attention to some of the specifics so that we can plan accordingly for the what ifs in the future. Okay?
Very good. Agreed, thank you, well said, and we are very appreciative of these budget reviews. I love transparency, I think it's very healthy for us as elected officials, but also the community at large to be able to see how, how things are running. So very well. Moving into agenda item five dot J, discussion and update on the Hubbard Drive project, the water bridge plan, Town Center Park project, and Terry Lane rehabilitation project. Mr. Creep?
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. As stated, this is the project's update for Hubbard Drive, the water bridge plan, Town Center Park, and we've added Terry Lane. And we're stuck. All right, okay. This is Hubbard Drive project. Everybody already knows this is multi-phase road project that was part of a developer's agreement, where we did three phases of it, and this is phase four. We're going to bring it from Michael up to seven forty. This, this encompassed widening Hubbard Drive to accommodate two week traffic, installation of new stormwater, there's some utility work that, that has already occurred, it's more utility work that will occur, some sidewalk, street lighting, and landscaping improvements. We are in coordination with utility provider Steel on getting pole, pole relocation, we learned this week, so that's pretty fun for this next portion, and we'll get that done. You see here, you see the phased improvements as they were done with the different portions, the causeway being one of them. And the source of the funding, again, as Jay has identified to us, is, 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 is on the screen there, and the estimated project cost is seven point seven. We'll know more here in just a few days, on October thirtieth, we're going to open bids and bring that to you guys for an award and get the project started.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Keep them crossed.
If I may, those roadway impact fees are, are predominantly dedicated to the HGYC, or is that also McCrummon Estates?
So, so the answer to the question is, in the impact fee study that was done in twenty twenty, please, everybody correct me if I get this wrong, still working on four months. Anyways, so the list of capital improvement projects that were in that impact, impact fee study, one of those projects was Hubbard Drive. And so these impact fees are eligible to be used for this project.
And, and the only reason that I wanted to point that out is that, as you, as you look at, you know, the cost of impact fees as they're associated to, hey, they're, they're developing, and then we're assessing an impact fee to a, to a roadway, we, as council, and this goes back to Councilman Dodson's point and others, is that this is why we need to be very mindful of our CIP plan. So then that way, we can tackle these projects so they don't balloon in cost over time. Very well.
That's right.
Please continue.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question on this one, or do you prefer we wait until?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Brian, do we know the number of citizens impacted by this detour on this last phase of Hubbard Drive? Ish?
No, sir. I, I, I don't have that.
And that's okay, that, you know, listen, that's all right. We, we just probably need to have an idea of the number of citizens impacted by this. And then I, I think it's going to be really important that we get out in front of this on the communication side, because I suspect that it's, it's, it's no small number that, that sort of live in this part of our town.
Correct.
Is, as, as long as it's taken us to get across the days on our watering plan that people have to do, we don't want any surprises when they're all of a sudden rerouted and have to take a different path to and from their homes.
There will be significant detours because of where we're bringing the project up, it's going to affect everyone going in that direction. That's right.
And, and again.
In the master of the obvious form, let's just make this communication piece a very front footed part of our plan with this final phase of the Hubbard Drive.
I would agree, I think it was a great point, thank you for bringing that up. It's probably one of those things that we've all heard, is communication, communication, communication. I know Suzanne works diligently to try to figure out every form and fashion. In fact, we've deployed two new softwares, soon to be a third software for communication capabilities within the city that did not exist prior to this. But, but to Councilman Dodson's point, Hubbard Drive is so, I, I, I would, I would simply say that if I could speak on behalf of most of those residents, they've been waiting on this for years, and they're going to be so excited about it until about sixty to ninety days of being detoured, and then they're going to be like, when is this thing going to be done? My goodness, I can't wait till it's done, but this is terrible, right? We're doing one lane, distribution, et cetera. So if we could be very, very mindful on over touching, I would also say this is a more tenured population in this part of the city, so we want to be mindful of how we communicate with them. Not everybody's going to be on social media, so we need to probably look at, at even, even the increased cost of snail mail and, and be creative in the way that we communicate. So, very well said, I do appreciate you bringing that up.
All right. Any more questions on Hubbard? We'll, we're certainly bringing that back to you here in a week or two, or ten days, something like that.
Very good.
And we'll tell you a lot more. The next portion is our city of Heath's water bridge plan. And so the current, you know, everyone knows what, what our bridge plan is, but the city of Rockwall supplies us with water through a pump station over by the interstate behind Shenanigans on Townsend Road. We're currently operating from a memorandum of understanding and working toward contract at, and currently operating at six point five million gallons per day. Again, we did sustain the summer without restrictions, so that was a good thing.
Did you say that again?
We did sustain the summer without moving into additional restrictions. The Town Center Park well, the is awarded to see miller drilling, the notice proceed was given, obviously they mobilized out here October twentieth. I don't know if you guys were able to see it today, the, the, the actual rig is on site. You can, you can really see the derrick right along the side here, if you get a chance to look, it's quite large. So we expect to see that being erected in the next coming days, and drilling to begin by the tenth is currently what this, this schedule's given us by the driller. Again, the lead times for the electrical are going to cause an interim pause after the drilling. If drilling is completed, let's say around February, then, then they will pull out. We expect then to complete the, the field with the park and irrigate, irrigation to occur. Part of that change order we discussed tonight, we'll be bringing back, is that those electrical lines are already laid under it to bring in the electrics, to set up the well, and hopefully get it pumping in, in the next twenty two months, being online the summer of twenty twenty seven. Again, the one point five elevated that has been assigned to Garver, they're still in their preliminary work, they're, they did their underground survey has already been on site. They drilled several soil samples, I, I think it was four, at the pump station, and I don't know how many they drilled over here at Governor's to get the soil samples, so they can design their peers. But this, this was, this is still the schedule, we're on schedule, there are no issues, there's just not anything happening on the ground just yet. The same applies to the ground storage tank. Don't have anything on that. The water wells two through four scope, y'all approved that earlier this evening. So that is no, no longer currently under review. And the guys are here, and, and again, available for any questions. I know Kenny flew all the way out from Lubbock, so if y'all want to ask him a couple of hard questions, he's ready for that.
Kenny, I know this is going to go really smooth and really fast, because you're showing up. up.
That's the plan.
Any questions on the Water Bridge Plan?
Council, any questions? Very good, Mr. Crete?
And this slide is blank. So this would be the Town Center Park slide? We'll go ahead and move on to the aerial. And let me say this before we get started, we also have Ms. Joelle Sanders here, and she would be pleased if y'all would grill her about this park.
Not that she hasn't had enough time.
She keeps showing up, and nothing. So she's prepared. I asked her today if she wasn't, she said she absolutely is primed and ready. This is an overhead shot of the park. That's a fairly good rendering of what it looks like now, there is no landscaping or sod put down. We do have a lot of concrete on the ground, and we can go through some of the things. There's a, and again, Joelle's here, just saying. The color concrete was poured last week, the pavers at Festival Street have begun being put in, the playground equipment install is, I think it's still ongoing, I don't think we're quite finished with that. I don't know if y'all seen the pond out here, they're getting it mucked out, getting ready to put what they call the clay cap in. And once that happens, we'll actually have to put water in it to preserve that cap, and so your pond will begin to actually look like a pond, and we like that. And then, I don't know if y'all seen that curved pond wall that they built out there, you'll start to see, I don't, we're putting a full stone or a veneer?
It is a full stone.
It's a full stone on that as a veneer, I guess. I don't know how to state that, but it's actually full stones, it's not just a veneer. That is, should be starting tomorrow or the next day. We're currently working on some of our electrical items over here by the bathroom that they struck, I don't remember, I think y'all heard me talk about that last time, they're inches under the ground, and when we begin to do excavation, we hit some of that conduit, we replaced all that. The gabion baskets are being installed in the Dry Creek over here, I don't know if y'all seen those, so the Dry Creek is the area, if you go around any parks drive and it kind of carries around and puts you back out on seven forty, you'll see that Dry Creek area, and the gabion baskets is that steel wire box that they're building that has stones in it, and that's for drainage, it's supposed to slow the drainage as it carries through and delay, reduce the CFMs, I guess, that go into the system so quickly.
Yeah, we call it slow the flow.
Slow the flow.
So, I should help reduce how much water is going through the velocity, how fast it's going through. And mainly, that's also to restore that area of the park to how it originally was when we go back to our FEMA's landline maps. And so, for a long time, that portion of the park was not, I guess, it wasn't documented to state that it was in compared to what FEMA actually said that it should be or should be in, and so we really got back to where it should be.
Okay, okay. We have grading going on in Soccer Fields D and near the baseball field. I don't know if y'all drove around, I think we might have mentioned this last time, the baseball dugouts are clearly visible now, you can really tell where they're gonna be, and actually the structures are already up, there's just not the fencing yet. The shade structure was scheduled to be done by this Friday. I know he's having a little bit of issue with some support columns being powder coated, we're having all the iron for that being powder coated, and the shade goes on top of it. If he gets it completed, we're gonna see that erected by Friday and Monday, it may be pushed later in the next week, we're excited, ready to see that. I was hoping I'd be able to come in here and tell you all that that was already up, and we'd be able to see that. You know, that vertical stuff, you know, it's hard to keep coming here and talking about all the stuff you can't see, grade work and underground piping. And additionally, the shade, the stage is more and more imminent. Now we're talking about, I guess, days, a couple of weeks, and we're gonna actually see the stage being erected out there, so that'd be really good.
Couple of questions for Joelle, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Joelle, would you like to come up here?
Joelle, we'll need you at the lectern, please.
Okay, I'd like to restate, name's Joelle Sanders, I'm one of the landscape architects involved in these projects, and I'm also from Heath, and I really enjoy watching this park come along. My family's been in Stoneleigh for ten years, and so, anyways, I enjoy being at the city council meetings, not just in case you call on me, but because it's really great to hear that there are improvements going on, as someone who's been here for a while, so.
Thank you.
So, no grilling, just a couple of basic questions. So we're within kind of the six-month timeframe when, at least we think now, that the park might be available in, call it March-ish, kind of in that area, right? What are some of the critical path items that you can talk about and the things that could provide risk besides rain, just with regards to making that date?
Yeah. Part of this, I don't want to overspeak the construction team, right? And so, the general contractors may come and have a different opinion or be able to give a better answer, right, for construction timeline versus design. But a main portion of that will be how fast the well driller is able to actually accomplish this. I know that when it comes to that, that there's been, I guess, a fee that they'd have to pay if they don't hit a certain date, or, basically, the sooner that we can have water available in the park, and the sooner that we're able to finish the construction on that portion that the well driller is using, that's the sooner that we could open the park.
Right. So assuming, I think, Brian, if I'm not mistaken, the well driller is scheduled to be out of there by February, is it?
Yeah, so his tentative schedule was to be out of there by mid-February.
Right.
Mid to late, and there's an opportunity there, according to the driller, to even, that even to occur even sooner. And if that is help, if that does occur, let's assuming this machine doesn't break down, and we don't run anything crazy or anything like that, that will help us be able to compress that schedule and give you a more definitive date. Right now, they're very confident in saying that at least portions of the park, and it, you know, obviously they're talking about Field C, is likely not to be available by March.
Right.
But the other portions are certainly on the table to be open to the public by this spring, by March.
Right. So what I'm hearing you say, however, is that assuming our well driller is out mid-February, mid-March, I guess my question is, is four weeks enough time to put the softscape materials in and the sod in and what have you, to have this thing up and ready to go in March?
I'll say that that really has to be a question for our construction team.
It's a C-MAR question.
Yeah, our construction manager.
Right.
So, they do a great job of managing the teams and everything that are out there, the subcontractors. And so, really what our role is, is coming in when there are portions of the design that may need to be modified based on what we find in field, that's sort of our role in this.
Gotcha. So I think, Mr. Mayor, my questions, I guess, are for the construction group. Thank you very much.
I don't mind stating one, I know, so you know that what I, you know, this is our expectation.
Right.
And what we discussed today is, I asked those very same questions, actually, is what are our expectations, I mean, are we gonna, where are we gonna be at by March? And what are your expectations if we have to run beyond March, what would that be? And the issues that they told me is there's minor things that they're concerned with beyond that, but they are not anything that would impact opening of the vast majority of the park. There's some things called hydroseating and things like that we have to do, that we need the temperature to be a certain, above fifty at all times, and generally above eighty during the day, for the most part of the day, for that to function. Well, those areas are, the Dry Creek area, some of the lower parts of it, and I think there's a couple of other areas that have it, but they're non-impact or overall to being able to open the park. So, what I heard today from the vice president of Helen Wilkerson was, we can expect that vast majority of this park will be open and available to the public by around March.
Very good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Alexander, could you get with C-MAR, and I think the council is asking essentially, we'd like to know a soft open date and a hard open date, and then every time we get these updates, which I enjoy getting an ongoing update, is an updated aerial view?
Okay.
Moving forward. And they're not gonna wanna commit dates, but if you would just make it very clear on the expectations.
Right. So, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I kinda liken this in the private sector to a product launch.
Yep.
And it kind of, sort of feels like we're putting best-case, blue sky, everything goes well into March, and...